The Runway Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying your retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Runway Post Office, Marygold School, Alliant-Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runway Public School District website. Please rise until we have some pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call board members.
Ms. Bebe.
Here.
Ms. Davy.
Here.
Ms. Davidson. Ms. Leigo. Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Fandarella.
Here.
Ms. Warner.
Here.
Ms. Sands.
Here.
Ms. Walden.
Here.
Also present Mark Iannucci, Superintendent Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Shae Yezzi, Principal, Bingham and Downing School, Mr. Steve Keely, Principal, Vols School, Mr. Frank Heinz, Supervisor of Building and Grounds, Ms. Gladys Hubbard, Director of Special Education, and Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal, Vols School. At this time, I need a motion to approve meeting minutes from September 17.
I make a motion to approve meeting minutes from September 17.
Thank you, Maria. This is seconded by Barbie. Any questions? Roll call. Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davy.
Yes.
Ms. Leigo.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Fandarella.
Yes.
Ms. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Sands.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. We have a couple of presentations time. We're talking Mrs. Monica, who's on, she'll have to call Art, right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Art at Bingham and Downing. I never know. Art at Bingham and Downing School, as you well know, she's already planning for the art shows coming this spring. She is going to share with us the programs you're doing using and share some of the things you feel like. Ms. Monica, thank you for coming today.
All right. Thank you. Take it away. And me. We're just showing some slides here that are in a new program that we introduced last year. So if you're a parent, you know, you probably have gotten many emails from me linking you to your student artwork. But just to give you a quick overview, it's a program that follows each child throughout all of their years at Bingham and Downing. And then even if they move to Vols, even if the school's not doing it, the student can upload their own photos. So you don't have to keep piles and piles of artwork as your children or students get older. So I upload them, the student gets an email, the parent gets an email, and then from there, I will show you how you can use it yourself. Okay, not my computer, but to work with this. Does this have sound on it or no?
Sure.
It should? Okay. So I have a quick little video. It just tells you quickly what the program is.
It should take a little notice.
If it doesn't, it's fine. I could skip that part.
It's like a, just a quick one minute. Let's see if we have sound. 350.
Did you come, Ken?
All too often, these masterpieces are relegated to the bottom.
This is why we need more.
Backpacks, boxes, and basins, or the recycling bin. Artsonia is here to help. Artsonia is a free online museum that offers students and teachers an easy way to create digital portfolios of student artwork. You can share those portfolios with parents, grandparents, and anyone else in your family. They get to view the students' masterpieces, can comment on the artwork, and can even order custom keepsakes with the artwork on it. Bringing the art to life in your loved ones' home. So how does it work? Students create their art in class. They or the teacher photograph it and upload the artwork into their student digital portfolio. From there, families can view, comment, or order custom keepsakes. 20% of the sale goes right back to the school's art program, letting teachers buy more supplies and equipment for the art room. Artsonia costs nothing for schools, parents, or teachers, and currently supports over 50,000 art teachers and 5 million student artists. It's as easy as create, snap, share. Visit us today at Artsonia. Imagination immortalized.
Hey, I told you it was a quick video. So free is good, right? It's free for school, for parents. Now, if you order something, then of course you, hey, you can see I left some examples out on the table. There's mugs, there's magnets, the prints, you can have prints made. They're $2. So if you want duplicates of your child's artwork that you want to give to family members, then it's only $2 for you to do that. And 20% goes back to our art program. If you see here, you can see, this is just at Bingham, and I'll show you also at Downing. So input, we have 1,607 pieces of artwork, and this is just starting our second year. We have had 10,263 visitors. So people are looking at it. I had, a lot of parents come to me on back-to-school night saying how much they loved it. So I do know that it is definitely a positive and popular thing. You can make comments on your child's artwork when you get it. I'm just going to switch to Downing so you can also see that, I didn't want to link to both, but, so you can see that there are just as many pieces of artwork that are logged in to there as well. And I will show you how, when you view. So I've switched back and forth. I have two different logins. I had asked the company if I should do one, which sometimes works out better because if you see down here, if I upload 300 pieces of artwork by October 31st, then the school earns 30 free 16-by-20 prints. So if it was actually both schools combined, I would reach that 300, but they said it wasn't a good idea for me to do that, so I didn't. So I have them separated. But you can see at Downing, we have 1,460 artwork input and 8,714 visitors. The nice part is you'll see comments. So when your child, student gets their artwork uploaded, you can make a comment and send it back, and I read these to all the kids. They love it. They love hearing what people have to say about their artwork. So I don't know if you can read what some of the parents are saying, but it's really, really cute. They say, "We love it. We're super proud of you." "It looks just like our cat we have now." And so say if I choose this student, Brooklyn, okay, I choose her artwork here. This is what the parent will see. So they've seen her artwork. If I go over to Brooklyn's fan club, she has, oh, they just added someone else earlier today. She had nine fan club when I looked at it. Now she has 10, right? Oh, or nine. She has nine. She had eight earlier today. So all of these people, once the parent accepts the email, they can then invite any of their family members to also get the emails and see all their artwork. So I have students that tell me their grandmom lives in Florida, and every time I upload a new piece of artwork, she buys a magnet. And you can see I left a couple magnets on there. They're so cute. They have their name. And so she has all his artwork all over her fridge, which is really, really cute. So Brooklyn's very popular. She has nine. She has nine fan club. But also, I can also look down here. You can see all the comments. So Brooklyn has 22 comments on her artwork. So you see everything. "This is the cutest squirrel ever." "Brooklyn, it is so bright and beautiful, just like you." How cute, right? How some of the comments are. "So you're a superstar." So these are just hers. And I do read them to the students. When we have a little extra time, either when they're coming in or they're leaving, I'll play the slideshow of their artwork particular, and then I will read them if they have any comments. And so they love it. So if you haven't left Michaela any comment, you should leave her a comment.
I'm like such a loser. I'm going to tell you something. There's going to be 75 fans by the seat because my.
I do not doubt it, yes. She's going to have the most fans and the most comments. So they love it.
Amory needs another 140 purchases. So she's got to get 2 dollars purchases. She's got to get to the 300.
Right. So when you go to your child or they go, you know, the parent goes to their student artwork, so I just clicked on this rainbow of Brooklyn's. If I go over and I say view all, I can see her artwork on all of the keepsakes that you can buy. Okay? Did I, there was a, did I put it out? Oh, I didn't. Because this is so cute. This little ornament with, first one's coming up, too. And they're actually really nice quality. If you feel them?
Yeah.
Like they're cute. The magnets are nice quality, the.
This is adorable. I hope you can find these people and give them some.
Yeah, same here. So you can choose anything, and it shows you what it looks like on a pot holder, a cutting board. I don't think the prices are ridiculous either. I haven't had any complaints from the parents about the prices. So they seem to like it. But even while you're in there, you could go back to her other artwork and see how, you just click on that, and now you could see how her squirrel looks on it, or how her cat looks on it, right? To purchase that stuff. So it's really fun for the students. They love it. I take the pictures on my phone after, when they're done, and I have an app on my phone so all the pictures don't even save on my phone. It's not taking up any of my memory, my space, nothing. It goes right into the app. Google, in their Google Classroom, I have linked to this. So their names are automatically uploaded, their parents' emails are automatically uploaded, and even from year to year. So at the end of last year, I questioned, how am I going to get the first grade to now be second grade? This program automatically moved them to second grade. So I just go to the teacher in their class and their names. The whole roster comes up. I select that child, and then their artwork goes into their portfolio. So it's an awesome program, and I can make, you know, slideshows or anything out of it to be used at any time. So that's basically the gist of it. If anybody needs to see anything else.
I was going to say, Ms. Monica is putting the spotlight on the program, but really the spotlight needs to be on Mrs. Monica. So I just wanted to kind of be very honest about that. She's making you look like, oh, yeah, I just take these. I mean, she's taught the students, she's prepared, everything. She gets a lot of credit at the end of the year, but a lot of the behind-the-scenes, you know, things that are happening each and every day, I mean, you're probably one of my favorite people to observe. Because you go in there and it's just like creativity, galore, whatever. And then like for her to bring me a program that is also like showcasing her creativity, whatever. So it's a fantastic program, and I'm so glad you were able to share that with the board and everything. But honestly, it's like the real credit is going toward teachers who are making these things happen behind the scenes for the students and for the parents, and I do really appreciate you for offering this to them.
Thank you. One thing I did forget is if you see up here, so at Downing, so it'll say available funds. So $179.15. Bingham has more. I think Bingham's almost close to 300. It's over $400 total. So once that, I haven't used any of the funds yet that have come back to the school, and because it's a new program, that's not bad, $400, right? So once, you'll see redeemed funds. Just so you know how it goes, once I decide to spend the money, I'm waiting for something really good. So you look down here, options. So I can go to Blick, Blick Art Materials, which is where I order a lot of art stuff from anyway, so it makes it really easy. It goes right there. A check to the school, which is not my favorite option. I'd rather use the supply. I don't want it to get lost anywhere, but anyway, you can order stuff from them. So sometimes they come up with stuff, like you see Artsonia Light Box. It's like a box that you can put the artwork in and take the picture from above. I'm not wasting the money on that. I don't mind taking it with my phone. Or you can do an Amazon e-gift card, too, if we wanted to order stuff from Amazon. So either way, when we are ready to redeem it, I'll go to Jade, and then she'll let you guys know, you know, to what we're going to spend it on.
That's very cool.
So that's, that's pretty much it. Anybody have any questions?
Can they order, how long does it take to get like a cup or?
It's so quick. All the parents have told me when they get it, within, like a few days. They get it, yes.
I mean, it's here.
Oh, the cup is really cute.
It's like really great.
And when you pick the cup, so say you do pick, oh, there's, I have, and then you could get t-shirts. So I had some students last year buy their, they bought them for Christmas presents.
That's cute.
Their artwork on the t-shirt, they could not wait to wear them to school. It was so cute.
Yeah.
But, oh, that ornament's only 15 bucks?
Yeah.
That's great. It's not bad. It's really not. If you, oh, and so if you see connect parents, so right now, I have 92% of the parents are connected.
That's amazing.
So it's been great. 10 students do not have parents connected. And the majority of them are like ELL students, too. So, but, and then I'm teaming up with Melissa Austin so she can maybe reach out to them and show them what to do. So it's, like I said, the response has been amazing. 92% of the parents connected are great. So just to finish, I have to show, oh, am I on Downing? Yes. I'm just going to show Samantha so she can tell.
She's been talking about this for weeks since school started. It better be good because, you know, some of us were in special art and some of us were in our family, and it's a big deal to the Sam Polski girls.
Here she is, Michaela.
I don't know. That don't look like special art material.
There it is.
All right. That's not what I envisioned, but you know. You better stick to the answers. You better stick to that.
So you just have to tell her that you saw.
I will. Now, you were joking. I will. And I'll have to tell mom and dad I saw.
And if you pick the cup or something, there's like 10 different options you could put on the back. So on the back of that one, what does it say?
It is so cute. It says, "World Famous Artist, Artwork by Brim." And this is actually a nice mug.
It's really nice. The quality is really nice. But you could put, it could say, "I heart mom," "I heart dad," if you're doing, you know, grandma, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Christmas presents, whatever. Okay, I'm not selling mugs, so I'm good. No other question?
No.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming out.
All right, you need your agenda, Dr. McCarron. I just have to figure out how to get out of this.
She said, "At times."
I mean, you know how like, Angel, you know how we are with our kids' art, with our kids' exhibits.
I told her she can work for that company. She did sales. I'm buying.
I'm doing this. I believe.
Yes.
That is so funny. We literally got.
Okay, so I'm about to follow. I am super excited to be presenting the NJSLA data. Now, that being said, the NJSLA data, this will be the last year that we have the NJSLA data being presented from Pearson. The company no longer has a contract with the state of New Jersey. The state of New Jersey is now contracting with Cambium Learning, which is a separate company, and it is going to be an NJSLA adaptive test, which means that the questions will change based on the student responses. So if the questions are correct, they might get a little bit harder. If the questions are wrong, they will get a little bit easier. They are making every single school in the state of New Jersey do a field test. It's not a, it's not, it's not just a.
I know about the field test.
So everyone has to do it. In Runway, good news I got today is that third graders will not be participating in the fall administration. It will only be fourth grade. Fourth graders will be tested on third grade. Fifth graders will be tested on fourth grade skills because technically they are, it's a new, it's the start of the year. So they're only getting tested on the standards that they were at before. Presentation tonight was actually put together to give credit where credit is due by Mr. Alata or Math Instructional Coach. One thing that he also added in with this information was also our STAR Fall to Fall comparison, along with attendance data by grade level as well. So that way, there's kind of multiple data points that we're looking at overall. So for fourth grade, this is our current fourth grade students graduating class of 2030. That's weird to say. You will see, if you look, if you look at the first column on the left-hand side, total proficiency in ELA was 26%, mathematics was 27%. If you look at the fall scores, you will see that going across, there was an increase of .9, which is nine months' growth over the course of the year. When you consider the fact that the STAR administration is end of September to May, it's about one month for every year that they were in school. When you look at attendance on the bottom right-hand corner, you're going to see that overall attendance is 94%, 94.3% attendance, but then you'll see chronically absent, 5.2%. So chronically absent is equal to students who miss 18 days or more. So it's 10% if they're missing 10% or more. It does not matter. There's no such thing as a excused absence. When we say excused absence, it still counts as an absence for the day, but an excused absence just means that the district will not have to file anything with Trenacy Court or anything like that because there's a reason why you were out. But there's nothing that is just excused overall. A few things that are excused in the state of New Jersey would be like Bring Your Child to Work Day, certain things that were already approved by the state. In grade five, you'll see proficiency is 26.8% in ELA, and math is 25.6. You will see that in, the top row is math, the bottom row is ELA. So you will see the fifth graders currently grade equivalent went up nine months, .9, went up four months in ELA. For attendance, you will see that the total attendance was 93.8%. The state is looking for 90, is it 92%? Let's look at the number. 92% I want to say is the number that the state is looking for for acceptable, but you'll see chronically absent is 19.5%. So in terms of that, that's students who missed 18%, 18 days or more. I apologize, 19%, 18 days or more. In grade six, you'll see total proficiency in ELA, 52.8%, and math, 31.7%. You will see that in math, they went up .7, and in ELA, they went up 1.5. For attendance, we're at 94.2%, and chronically absent is 15.8%. For grade seven, you will see we have for ELA, 56% proficiency, and math, 20% proficiency. For grade equivalent, under STAR, in math, they went up .9, and then in ELA, they went up 1.4. Total attendance is 91.8, that would be rounded up to 92, and then chronically absent is And then finally, grade eight, in ELA, 61.8%, in math, 34.2%. Grade equivalents, you will see 1.7 for math and 1.2 for ELA. For total attendance, we're at 93% attendance, which is above the 92, and then chronically absent is 18.9. And then finally, these are our students who are at, trying to this point, who graduated last year, but you will see for ELA, it's 54.4% for ELA. And then you're going to see there's a separate one for math because we have to break it down between both eighth grade and then also algebra. So we have 8.6% were proficient in eighth grade math, so that's what the algebra students removed completely. And in algebra, we were at 100%, which is a huge jump from prior years in terms of 100% proficiency on the algebra assessment. And those are things that Black Horse Pike will look at in terms of where students get placed moving forward and whether or not they have to redo, because I think it's algebra A and algebra B that they have. Am I correct in saying that? There's two algebra?
One?
No, it's A and CP is what you're saying.
So those were, but they used to get placed based on how they perform on the NJSLA. So that increases.
Right.
You'll also see that's broken down by female, male, white, Hispanic, Latina, IP504, and ESL. So it's just multiple things that we are looking at with that being said. As I said, we're doing the NJSLA adaptive coming up in the end of October into the first two weeks in November. That's across the state of New Jersey. They're pretty much pressure testing the test and the assessment as a whole. Cambium Learning has two years, a two-year contract with the Department of Education, which means that once this gets set up, another test might be coming along. Once again, this will only be given once a year, once it's actually done, which will be in the spring. So there will be no pray, no pose. At this point, we are currently, as of January, we're bringing in different samples of literacy programs for K-5 because we are up on our literacy program, so we are taking a look at different programs to see what teachers want to look at, including our current program that we're currently using, which is definitely the last one. Questions on that?
There are basic questions, Monica.
Yep?
When you see chronically absent jumps so much when you hit fifth grade, do parents still get reasons for absenteeism?
Yes.
Do we know why there's?
So we will, we will get doctor's notes, and then don't forget also, when you see that chronically absent jumps so high, it's based on the number of days. So if you have a student who might have a medical condition and is out for a true medical note, and let's say they're out for 100 days, because, you know, you'll approve homebound instruction, you'll approve different things, well, homebound instruction would count as a two-hour thing, but if they have doctor notes for the reasons why they're out, Angel, that number counts towards the total population. So even though it might be less students who it's involved with, it might be an extending circumstance as far as whether or not the students are participating in homebound instruction, whether or not the parents are, you know what I mean? Because we might set up homebound instruction, but if they don't sign off on it or don't, you know, set up the appointments, we can't do anything. So, and that's where Gladys runs into trying to navigate those situations, whether we set up the teachers, outside companies, all the other, all the other options that we have.
There's a really big jump from fourth, fifth, and then fifth sticks in one, seems to be that steady and still higher than fourth. There's a reason why.
So serving grade levels, it could be for specific situations that we have going on.
Or women's.
It's definitely, it's definitely an issue, though. I mean, and another thing is, I mean, this isn't to be, this, I don't, I don't want to sound like a bad parent, but like, I let my son go a lot when he was here, too, like away. He traveled and things like that, so he probably would have like passed, but actually went against the district in seventh and eighth grade, like honestly, because I let him travel for, for training.
The other thing to consider.
You know what I mean?
And the other thing to consider also is, as a district, we are a walking district. So that has a whole other, a whole other thing behind it. I mean, it evolves. I mean, they have multiple programs that they deal in terms of race of clock and trying to really incentivize students to show up and to get to class on time and to make sure that they're here for first period and showing up when they need to show up. So it's putting all those things in place. It's interesting because we'll have this conversation with the state, and they'll say, like, you should give out gift cards. And I'm like, where are we getting the money for gift cards from? And like, I'll just start laughing. I'm like, I would love to give out gift cards. Do you know where I can get them from? And they'll be like, um, well, what about, you know, can you give them things? I'm like, where can I get those from? Can you please sell me out?
Oh, so.
We can purchase those things, but no, it's definitely something that is addressed and that's something that we're constantly looking at in terms of student performance.
Yeah, 100%. It's an issue.
Because if they don't, in school, they can't learn, they can't learn the test rules, they're like crap during correlation.
And now we're changing the assessment, so.
Our lovely state, I'm like, I can't even talk about it. We have to pilot it, all these things.
Ms. Yasi was very excited when I told her that the third grade would not be tested.
I literally, you should be doing a dance. Because you should have saw our math department when they found out we have to take the two days that we're in school, the one week in, uh, November to pilot this test for this company.
I was grateful.
Well, Mr. Pronor and I spent four hours the other day sitting to upload all the staff members, to upload all the students, and then we went to go upload the accommodations. And they go, oh, we haven't created that document yet, but that'll be coming.
But they got the contract.
It's one of those things that it's like you're building the plan as you're flying it, as they say. So it's just where we're at at this moment.
Any other questions for Dr. McCarron? No? All right, thank you. At this time, is there any public comment on agenda items? No? Okay. Let's try and change.
Thanks for coming out, everybody. Um, all the studies before, we are seeing a little more early on registrations for kids. See, I see those numbers kind of creep up. We moved registration to a central office. We see the, the phone calls every day for people. Even if you're down or, you know, professors, we'll see, we'll see. I think you're gonna see those numbers creep up about ten or twelve over the course of the year. We never really see it that early in the year, but we do. Um, professional development activities to place on Friday, thanks to all the administrators and the teachers participating. Everything seems to be going well. We did steal Black Horse Pike's ideas on eight to one for PD, straight through, rather than having a lunch break, rain, great breaks. The teachers were set, set, they got a little weekend. Uh, it also kind of focused the trainings and kind of got things done, so. We'll still good ideas, we appreciate that, having that idea. Um, district events, had an opportunity today, maybe for the PTA here, given an opportunity to see the...
Fun run.
Fun run?
Very, very.
I'll tell you, I couldn't do some of those activities those kids did. They did a great job, all the volunteers, they've been down this morning. I had a chance to see Bingham this afternoon. Thanks to all those volunteers, I sent a message out to them, I know they raised a ton of money.
I don't know, I think they're trying to reach seventeen thousand today, I don't know if they...
It's just amazing, it's so amazing.
They are, they're like...
Amazing.
Top-notch.
That was a great, like, I bet around, not really sure, desperate to use now, they got a lot done that last half hour of the school day, because they were all hopped up, but it was a great time. Soccer, Mr. Maloney, I know, director, I had a chance to see a boys' soccer game today.
They lost seven, seven, six.
Oh, you know, I left at halftime.
They went for two instead of a...
So I had a playoff start for them, um, as well as the other soccer, drill soccer, I feel like you're wrapping up their seasons. Playoffs for them, I believe, for, I believe, next, next week, usually, probably. Uh, facilities, I'm not gonna look at Frank, we're talking to him right now, not that I'm mad at him, but then he's gonna throw something at me. Cement work is slow process, especially at Downing. We hit some hiccups for some of the installations, something they had to do. They poured cement down it one day and they tore it up about two, three days later. Because Frank and I had some questions on some of the drainage, more like Frank, I just said Frank, why is this water drained partly? He got the degree of it, um, but we kind of have that right in front of us. So they are finishing up this project as well, as well as there's a railing that we're putting right here at the... So basically, it's a couple of...
Is that silver railing staying like that at Downing? Now, I haven't gone out of my car, I just looked from far. That's staying like that, like this far away?
Yeah, so I questioned that, because that's code. It has to be a foot away from a step, so as you're walking up, you can grab it as you're reaching.
Okay, all right. I mean, I don't know code, it just looked, it didn't look...
Nope.
It doesn't look right?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, all right.
So...
And like I said, I, I don't park there anymore, because they beat down me today, uh, the cement guys. So, I parked up a block, but the, but I did like check out what they were doing.
Yeah.
It looked a little different.
I didn't like it neither, but that's code, so.
All right.
We have to kind of leave it there.
As long as, as long as you, as long as you're all right with it, I'm fine with it.
He's not.
I'm not happy with it, but we're gonna have to deal with it.
Oh, sorry, 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 I didn't pick up your point now, my bad.
It's a touchy subject.
Sorry. Well, I noticed it just driving by, so of course you're gonna notice it, because I don't really check things like that.
That's why the concrete came back out.
Yes. Okay. The drainage didn't work after already the other day, so. We do appreciate that. Um, snapshot was submitted, no, not submitted, it was due today. Upload, they gave us two more weeks, because the state is not a very good place to accept their owners, I guess, right?
Just not a good place.
Well, that's it. And Dr. McCarron mentioned, and we'll talk about that part of testing. Uh, I know there's a trainer for it, but we always do. This should be interesting, we'll see. This is what, our fourth different version of the test, I think, since I became administrator.
So, yeah, so.
We'll go with that, we'll get there. Our next, uh, conference information will go out, um, parents sign up, I don't know, right? And we'll follow up, conferences are the week of, did you mention?
Third, fourth.
Yes. So if people, and again, if people can't make a conference, our teachers do a great job accommodating those who can't get here. You know, whether it be a phone conference, whether it be a Zoom conference, whether it be, you know, whatever they want to do. We do appreciate our staff working with those parents and families. Our next meeting is already on November nineteenth, which is a Wednesday. We, there's a PTA event before that, Pretzels with the police. Can I cancel that? I was on their website today, it didn't say.
Yeah, it was canceled.
Okay, so we can put it pops up again, and then I'll see what's the, what numbers should we go on next week? Down in Atlantic City, New Jersey schools, that's all I have. Any questions for our side of the chain?
Okay. Any questions on business, um, curriculum? No, no, no. Do you have anything else to add? I skipped you.
I feel like I've, I feel like I've shared a lot.
Yours on? Okay.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions? I mean, I just think we should put this on record for the first time ever, Dr. McCarron doesn't want to speak. But other than that, we'll move down to the principals reports and, um, district reports. Any other questions there for the nurses, anything special, report? No, anyone? No, okay. Um, well, as far as the PTA, obviously, we want to publicly thank them for their cool event today and everything that they do, um, for us. And I know they have their annual trunk or treat, it's a big, um, I help them with that behind the scenes, um, for use of facilities. So that's coming up too, that's a big, um, New Jersey School Boards next week, the workshop. Um, please reach out to Mark if you're going to be down on Tuesday. We would like to get together, uh, for lunch.
Lunch, lunch.
Lunch, okay. Um, and is anything, want to have anything else to add there for Camden County Services Commission? No? All right. So then we're ready for new business? Okay. Um, under property and transportation, I need a motion for items numbers one, two, three. No. Oh, that gives me every time, one and two. Motion made by Barbie. Second by Lisa, was that your Lisa? Malo, I'm sorry, Melissa. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Davy?
Yes.
Mr. Lego?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion for one to six, please.
I'll make a motion for one to six.
Second.
Motion made by Lindsay, second by Angel. Any questions there? Roll call.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Davy?
Yes.
Mr. Lego?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes. Under finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through nine.
Make that motion.
Yep, few added there at the end.
Under items one to nine.
Thank you, Dennis. Second by Lisa, sorry. Any questions there? Roll call.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Davy?
Yes.
Mr. Lego?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under curriculum, I need a motion for items one to three.
I'll make a motion for items one through three.
Motion made by Angel.
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Roll call.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Davy?
Yes.
Mr. Lego?
Yes.[1667.27]